Good evening, welcome. We're so glad to have you here tonight. I would ask you please to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is our budget hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that has any questions about our budget. Okay, we will address that later in the agenda and we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Henson.
Thank you, Mrs. Zila. I have several things for you this evening. We are off to a really great start to the school year. Been able to be in several of our buildings already. I hate to say this, somebody knock on wood, but we're off to a really quiet start, but we're off to a great start as well. I will tell you that after we have dropped those students that haven't shown or we've had record requests, as of right now, we are up over 300 students from where we were last year. And so that's a very, very positive sign for us. We are up at all of our high schools in the school district. And so again, our numbers after taking off the no-shows and the drops, we're up over 300 students. And so that's over last year. So we're excited about what we're seeing in relation to our student enrollment. Other things that we have for you, the digital learning initiative, you're keenly aware of what's going on with the digital learning initiative. The deployments last week went well. We are deploying this week, extensive deployments this week. It is a tremendous amount of work for all of our employees to go through this deployment, to get everything up running smoothly, but that is going well. And so we're excited about what's going on with the digital learning initiative. You know, one of the changes was the very first morning at one of our elementary schools, I saw some of our elementary teachers taking the first day class photos with their iPad. And so change of what's going on, what modern technology certainly brings to us. The Kansas Art Education Association has named Jennifer Hudson, who's a teacher for us at Shawnee Mission South High School, as one of her outstanding, as the Outstanding Secondary Art Educator of the Year. She is honored for her leadership and her service to the profession, to her students, colleagues, and for her art advocacy. She will be formally honored for this achievement later this fall, but congratulations to Jennifer Hudson. Also, I want to mention to you, congratulations to another one of our employees. The Kansas Choral Directors Association has presented John Duncan, a music teacher at Indian Woods Middle School, with their Prelude Award. The award is given to honor successful teachers of choral music in Kansas and to recognize those who have potential as exemplary professionals to have extended careers in choral music. So congratulations to John. I have two save the date reminders for you. They're both in September, which as we know is right around the corner. As you know, Dr. Willard Daggett, founder and chairman of the International Center for Leadership and Education, will be at Shawnee Mission South at 7:00 AM on September 30th. We're excited to have Dr. Daggett in the Shawnee Mission School District. Those invites are going out and you can certainly respond to Mrs. Wendering in regard to an RSVP. We do have a seating capacity, and so we're having to watch our seating capacity in that regard and certainly asking people to RSVP. And also, and this is a theme, at 7:00 AM on September 25th is our Shawnee Mission Education Foundation Fall Breakfast. And so that's right around the corner as well. It's at the Overland Park Convention Center, and so we look forward to these opportunities. As you are keenly aware, we have had a facilities committee that has been operating for the last several months. We had a facilities committee back in 1112, that school year, so the current facilities committee has taken that report as a foundation. They've been touring various sites, having discussion about what we need to do to upgrade, change, alter facilities here in the Shawnee Mission School District. Obviously, one of those hot topics of conversation that we've heard through our surveys, through the facilities committee as well, is in relation to safety and security. And so John Douglas, I've asked Mr. Douglas to come and share with us briefly tonight, just a little bit of an update on where we are with safety and security. As you know, the 16 buildings on this initiative in this round, and so that's implementation, several changes with safety and security. Mr. Douglas, thank you, sir.
I see all the members of the board. We took a look, starting with the beginning of this summer, and had the opportunity to do kind of a cursory evaluation of what our building needs and changes might be in anticipation of questions that would be asked later on. One of the most pressing needs that's out there is the ability to secure our perimeters. Now, the first 16 schools that now offer restricted access, and we are, we're in the test phase of that. We have them in, we're working out the bugs. This was a pilot program and is intended to be a pilot program. We'll know more about it in the next 30 days and be able to fine tune where we're at. But it showed us a lot about the necessity to maintain good perimeters. Now, we have a great number of major initiatives underway in the area of security, things you'll hear more about. But the ability to secure our perimeters through a variety of technology and some other things that we're looking to do is absolutely integral if we're going to be able to maintain security in the schools. And it starts with good perimeter control. Now, the elementary schools have reasonable perimeter control when we have open, when we have access, as we do in the 16. The high schools, however, are rather porous, and we're going to fix that. I think the important thing to remember is that this has a certain measure of urgency to it. It's not something that we can drag on for two or three years. It really needs to be addressed and needs to be addressed rapidly if we are to provide the safest environment for our students. So basically speaking, I'm sure that we'll have the opportunity to talk about all of those things and other major initiatives, but we did want to put on the table the idea that perimeter control and perimeter security is the cornerstone of a program we're putting together.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. So again, the facilities committee continues to meet. They are getting very close to making a recommendation to me, so don't be surprised. Over the next several weeks or months, if you see a recommendation coming to you in relation to putting a bond issue on the ballot. So again, we're really close in the facilities committee to making this recommendation. So I would anticipate some information coming to you over the next couple of weeks. I could bring to you as early as next month, a recommendation to place a bond issue on the ballot before our public. And so obviously, stay tuned in that regard. Again, a great start to the school year. Enrollment is up. I'm always hesitant to report enrollment so early in the school year because it is fluid. We have added 11 additional teachers since last spring in relation to enrollment. We are watching several other class sizes as well, and we're still in August. And so we'll kind of take a deep sigh after Labor Day to say enrollment's really settled in those final decisions. We have a couple, we actually have several elementary grade levels we're watching and will make decisions on those grade levels by the end of the week. So it's a great early indicator, but again, we're early in the process. We do see movement of people moving in and out of our school district and changing residence between now and the Labor Day holiday. So stay tuned, but we certainly like what we see right now. Thank you, Mrs. Zila.
Great, thank you very much, Dr. Henson. We'll move on to open forum, and I believe we have a couple that was, came right at 7:00 here to speak. So let me give you just a little blurb of open forum, and then I would ask you to step up to the podium here and give us your name, okay? Since I do not have that at this point in time. The Board of Education provides open forum as an opportunity for public comment on school district issues. Agendas are published in advance to notify the community of the topics under consideration. Patron comments are welcome, but those wishing to speak to an issue not included on the agenda will not usually receive a response during the meeting. So with that, I would invite you to come up to the podium. And please introduce yourselves.
Yes, hello. My name's Michael Dare.
Veronica Tevis.
And what we were really hoping to talk to the board today about was a roofing system called SBF that we feel that could make a very green Shawnee Mission School District and add a lot of, to lower your energy consumption, that would allow money for, for other projects such as securing the schools, adding to teachers, adding to electronics via those jerseys for the football team or, or what have you. May we commence?
Yes. I would just ask you to be as concise as you can.
Absolutely.
That would be great. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Every, every two.
That'd be great, thank you.
All right, so like I mentioned, Michael and Veronica, I'm actually a Shawnee Mission South graduate, back in the days. Just a quick little preview about our company. We're from ICC Roofing, and like he mentioned, we're here to talk about spray polyurethane foam. Who we are, real quick, is that we are a local business here in the Kansas City area. We are locally operated and locally owned. The owner himself is Eric Schlossenberg, who's just an ordinary guy, a dad and a husband. And ICC Roofing Company itself has been around since 2010, and the owner has been dealing with spray foam and spraying it for 10 years now. And the company is accredited with the Better Business Bureau since 2013.
What is SBF? It's a spray polyurethane foam. I have a sample over here. You, you have this technology in your homes right now. It's worked for NASA, it has worked in airplanes, it's the insulation that you use in your refrigerator. If you notice, you put your hand on, on the freezer, it's not cold at all to the touch, but inside it, it's obviously freezing. And there, there's a few companies that I would think are noteworthy that, that use this technology. Ford Motor Company, for example, and Texas A&amp;M.
Absolutely. And we're going to talk about the three main keys to what an ideal roof is really supposed to have. Three things, waterproofing, roof insulation, and sustainability.
With waterproofing, waterproofing is the primary cause of everything that will decorate a roof. The water leaks will ruin substructures and will cause damage or decay to what's inside the building. The advantage of spray polyurethane foam is that it is seamless, and so it will eliminate any leaks that you do have, and it will be able to hold any water. And water is no longer an issue of concern.
Yes, absolutely. And like he mentioned, it is seamless, and it is manufactured onsite as you're installing it. It does illuminate every single thermal bridging that there is, boards, nails, and seams. And what thermal bridging is, in a nutshell, is basically on your roof, there's a bunch of nails on there, and what that does is it lets the heat go inside your home. And one or two is not a big deal, but when you have a lot of them, it really lets a really considerable amount of heat inside, and therefore it really compromises the insulation of the roof.
And going back again to that water, I don't know if everyone's seen that sample I have going around.
It's over there.
Here is, here's another sample. It has a membrane over the top, and it has foam in the inside, and if some debris, trees, large hail was to hit it, and it was actually to compromise the outside layer, the, the inside, the polyurethane foam, water can sit in there 15 years and it will not leak into your substructure. So it is, it's still an uncompromised system.
And like, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, and like he mentioned earlier, compared to your refrigerator, it does protect from the elements such as keeping the building cool in the summertime and obviously keeping it very warm in the wintertime.
The last thing is sustainability. We have found that we spray the material and then we put a membrane on top, be it the urethane or this acrylic on top, and the only thing that we need to do, we never need to tear this off. We never need to replace this roof. The only thing that we do every 10 years is just spray another membrane on the top to keep it protected from the sun and to keep the water. That means that the roof lasts this decade, the next decade, my grandchildren's grandchildren, provided we're still using that building, could still benefit from this roof.
And whenever the 10th year is up, we go up and do an inspection, and we will, like he said, we will recode it and we will issue you a new warranty for another 10 years. Another really, really, I would say the greatest feature of this, to be honest, is the energy payback. And a roofing, in any business, they consider it as a really big liability. It costs a lot of money to repair, to install, to maintain, but you can turn this liability, which is your roof, into an asset instead. SBF, which is the, what we're just talking about, it does pay for itself many times over. Mr. Robert Lyons from FRCI, served for International Inc., mentioned that many companies and institutions are using SBF roofing system, and they have results that show that this roofing system has provided a total investment payback of between three to seven years.
So Texas A&amp;M, for instance, and this is where we really think that the true payback can come, they to date have over 11 million square feet, and they didn't do that all at once. I mean, they did it slowly over a period of time. But that 11 million square feet has an energy savings. The amount they save on energy can go to something else. So after that four and a half years, there's more room in the budget for, like we said, the jerseys, for teachers, for keeping up with the rising demands of protection. And this system will just continue to pay for it every four and a half years or so. So with the reduced maintenance to the roof between 13 and 54 percent and the payback every year just with the energy expenditure alone, we feel like it is an immensely beneficial system. And some other benefits, there are some school districts up in the Northland that are putting a roofing system called TPO on. And down in the American Southwest, there was electrician that was drilling to fix some wiring that had gone wrong in the school. He was inside the school. The roof heated up when he was drilling, the top of the roof caught fire, and that TPO is not a safe product, and it spread like wildfire. But that's what they're putting on most of the schools up in the Northland, and they're doing it for about $20 a square foot, which I think is criminal. I mean, we're looking at not even half that for our cost. But we like to, provided the substructure or the roof, you know, is intact, we just spray over the top of it so there's no tear off. And we also don't have a large crew, and so that maximizes the amount that you're paying for the material and not the labor that goes into it. Because we're not tearing off, it's considered a greener roof, and you're not filling landfills up with material that just, they don't need to be there. We also are proud to report that this roof, I mean, for fire, it is not going to increase the school's vulnerability. Wind uplift during the tornadoes that we get every once in a while is the most resistant to that type of weather anomaly. And that sample that I gave you can hold two-inch hail balls without leaving a dent. And if it is dented, which I'm sure the school's going to be hit, and it's 16 buildings in the next 10 years, all we have to do is spray a membrane over it, and then it's as good as new and we issue a warranty. With that said, if we wouldn't have your permission, we would very much like to go measure the schools and just present to you an estimate on what, what that might cost.
Yeah, there is someone that you would have to talk to about doing that.
Absolutely.
Bob Robinson would be the, the one to contact in the district. He's in charge of our facilities, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. If you would just leave your names with Terry so we have that for a minute, that would be great. I know your first names are on this proposal, but would like your last names as well.
Thank you, Veronica.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on July 21.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Any discussion, corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting of August 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack and Mrs. Neber. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Approval of routine business by consent. Is there anything that any board member would like removed from the consent agenda? Mrs. Neber.
I would move approval of routine business by consent.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. All those, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Okay, we will move forward to the action items at this point. We will move to Action Q, Business Services, which would be the adoption of the agenda.
Adoption of the budget.
Adoption of the budget. I just saw that word right there, too. Adoption of the budget, thank you. Is there any?
Change.
Yes, workman's comp is included in consent. Okay, thank you. Is there any questions on the approval of the budget? I would entertain a motion for approval.
I would move approval of the adoption of the 2014-2015 budget.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Thank you, Mrs. Neber. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to Action Superintendent. And R1 is the approval of the revised Board Policy DIAB, DJAB, put on my glasses, and this is the second reading, Dr. Henson.
This is the second reading of this policy. It doesn't change our practice. It does change because of the title of an individual, that we no longer have that position in the school district, but nothing changes in relation to our procedures.
Thank you.
Move approval of R1.
Thank you, Mrs. Neber.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any other discussion on this policy? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. R2, Dr. Henson.
We have a late resignation of one of our teachers. My recommendation tonight is to approve the resignation, one of our first grade teachers, with imposition of the $1,000 resignation penalty.
So moved. Thank you, Dr. Denny.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. Bar 3, Dr. Henson.
Annually, we have to adopt the school term plan, and so you have to adopt, this is not anything new at all, 1,116 hours for the 2014-2015 school year.
Move approval of R3.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Is that Mrs. Bisfield? Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries 7-0. And we will start with the policies. Dr. Henson.
Thank you, Mrs. Zila. Dr. Chapman, if you would turn me at the microphone, please. Three of you have been serving on the Board Policy Task Force. Thank you, condolences as well. I'm not sure how that really plays out. This is a very, very laborious task, reviewing all of our policies in the school district. Dr. Chapman's been chairing the task force. Dr. Chapman, if you'll come and just kind of talk about the process, you can do it from right there, that you've been undergoing thus far, please.
Thank you. I am going to sit here because I'm organized. And as you know, KESB did an overview of our board policies, and it took pretty much all of the last school year for KESB to go through every one of our policies. And their audit came up with some great recommendations. And the reason that it's important for us to take a look at it is, right now, our current board policies, they're in good shape, however, they're aligned with a numbering or a lettering system within SBA, which is a fine practice. However, every time there's a revision or an adoption or a deletion of a policy that comes out, it makes it very challenging for us to make sure as, as administration and as board members, that we have a good policy in place to protect us and to govern the school district with the policies. So KESB made a recommendation, and their legal team reviewed every single one of our policies, and they put together this book, and the board committee has been looking at them for this month. The first read are Sections A and B, which deal with school district organization and school board operations. The majority of the policies that you're looking at this evening, in addition to the committee having fully vetted them, you can rest assured that they also went through the legal team at KESB. And the majority of these ahead of you really are a policy or a lettering change. There is a few that are recommended, recommended for deletion, and there's some few revisions as well, but the majority of them really are dealing with the letter changes. On the ones that have been deleted, and there are, none of them are affected in Section A, but in Section B, BCB, which is Board Conflict of Interest, that's one that's recommended for deletion. This one, it's, it has some very specific rationale for the reason for recommending deleting that one. Some of the other policies that are recommended for being deleted are ones that are just a restatement of the law or the statute, and that's really not necessary for us to restate the law or a statute in the board policies. So another one that would be impacted by that would be BDA, which is the Annual Organizational Meeting. Another one is BDB, which is Board Officers, and how those officers are elected. And then there's a few that are recommended to be deleted, but to be replaced by a change, a slight wording change, or perhaps it could even be something that we'll encounter in a later part of the policies. And that, a good example of that one would be BHD, which is Board Communication with the Public. And that one is also here in your list to take a look at, and that's Board Policy KB. It's the exact same language in our current BHD policy, which has been recommended to move, and they've just moved it to a different section of the book. So we've, go ahead and put this in our list for our first reading tonight, even though it's not in order. Section K will actually be reviewed toward the end of the school year in May, but we went ahead and put it ahead here since we're deleting one and moving it to a different section. We wanted to make sure it was covered. So that's kind of the Cliff Notes version of a lot of reading and comparing, and we do have a list of notes that KESB prepared, and I know each of the board members received that as well. I find it helpful to have the current board policies on one screen, have the revisions on another, and have the Cliff Notes in front of you, and a nice big cup of coffee. And it's quite helpful to do it when you're having difficulty sleeping because this comes around pretty quickly. But it is very, very detailed reading, and so the committee has done a really good job of paying attention to that and asking great questions. And Angie Staubalmer from KESB has been pretty much on speed dial and has been very helpful in answering any questions. So if you have questions or concerns, I'm sure any of us that are on the committee would be happy to respond.
Are there any questions from board members?
No, but someone on the committee might have questioned, too. Is that okay?
Yes.
I, I wondered, and I saw the deletions and understand them. We have, or currently still have a BB policy, which is the legal status for our voting areas, and BBA is still current, and I'm not seeing any deletion of those in our current. Are we thinking we don't need them, or?
The last I recall from our committee is that we did not want to delete BB.
But we don't have it in here, so how do we?
Correct, so it's still there. It's still in the policies. It's not been deleted and it's not being recommended for deletion. Even though it's one of the policies that KESB does recommend that we delete, but we felt like it was something that we should continue to have in the board policy, so it is still in there. Terry's done, she has a lot of the meticulous work, and she puts on all the policies to be And she puts on all the policies to be reviewed and the red line and strike through. So, you know, I'm glad that you're paying attention to it and helping us find those little details. But that's one that we did not delete.
Didn't purposely, and that's what I thought. On BBA, though, that has some of the things that are in BBAA also, aren't they?
Yes. Yes.
And we still have a current BBA that kind of overlaps. And I think we may be doing a lot of overlapping, which is going to be hard for people working on handbooks and things, too.
Yes. So we did leave BBA and BA in there.
Okay.
So we can, we can delete-
No, that's fine. I just wanted to be sure that we weren't having missed them in all of the pages and policies.
Are there any other questions, Mrs. Levens?
I have a question about R28, which is, are we going through these one by one?
We are not. We are not. I'm just fielding questions.
Okay. The, the board policy BCBI, which is Public Participation. I'll scroll down there. We are eliminating another section that included BEDH. And I'd like to suggest that we include those lines from BEDH. It just states that the board welcomes the interest and involvement of the public. And it is the intent of the board that this statement of its policy concerning meetings and procedures will alert the public and invite greater public participation. And then keep the rest of the, of the language that you're proposing. It just, it provides a welcoming, inclusive statement that we've, that had, has been removed.
Did you get that, Dr. Chapman?
Yeah.
Very good.
May I jump on, since I have a question?
Absolutely. Mrs. Mack.
I just have one question. And it's on that policy. First of all, thank you for doing this, Sarah and Craig and Donna. Thank you very much. But in the paragraph entitled "Open Form," Dr. Chapman, the last sentence, I'm just wondering what the rationale is for having that sentence. It would seem to me that that could be possibly deleted.
This is under handling complaints?
Trying to find- Above handling complaints.
Above handling complaints.
The sentence before that, where it says, "Board members may interact with speakers or direct the superintendent to follow up at a later date." I'm just wondering for the rationale for that sentence to be included. I'm trying to find it.
It's BCBI.
It's 28.
It's Item 28 on that action.
Yes. Let me look through the notes.
And I apologize for putting you on the spot.
It's okay.
I just have a question about that one.
No problem. In the notes from KESB, it says, "While the rules may not at first glance seem necessary, it's important the board establish appropriate guidelines. So persons speaking to the board do not stray into personnel issues." I think it's a way to establish some protocol for the board so that you're not in a position where sometimes you're interacting and sometimes you're not. But we can easily delete it as well.
Thank you. Dr. Denny?
I know that at our initial meeting in July, one of our duties was to adopt all the policies. So the policies that are in effect at this point are those that we adopted. And I think it's going to take us a while to go through the whole policy. And it's going to be all year. And I, I have a, I wouldn't elevate it to a level of concern, but I, by way of example, we are operating under the current policy for student discipline. Should we review that policy sometime during the year and alter our views and adopt that policy, then essentially during this school year, somewhere in the fall semester may be subject to a different outcome than somewhere in the spring semester. I'm not quite sure how we resolve that, if that really is an issue. But what I'm leading to is, we're doing first readings on all of these. And we have a few questions. Should we just delay the final adoption until later on as we see more of these coming up? Is there a need to update these policies as we go?
Thoughts from board members about that? Is this, is this a consensus from the policy task force?
No, this is just a question I have.
Okay.
Well, I think going through it, we've sort of mentioned the realities of some problems. If we go through a second reading and put it in the board book and you change something.
Dr. Chapman, do you, have you looked that far ahead to notice that there is that discrepancy possibly in student discipline? To see if there would be that big of a discrepancy between what our current policy is and what is recommended?
I did look ahead. There are eight. If, if the board decided to look at a first reading and a second reading and do it as we go, instead of doing a first reading now and then waiting to adopt the entire policy book in June, both are options, both would work fine. But there are only eight. If we did it by section each month, there are eight that need to be reviewed, but actually are moved or deleted into a section that we'd have to bump up a little bit earlier. So there's really only eight policies that relates to. Only two of them are, for example, in the students' section. And the students' section is the October-November timeframe. It has 74 policies, so we decided to break that into two. So that's in October and November. And there are two policies that we'd be looking at that might be covered in Section K, which will be one of the last items that we look at. And then the other one is Section G, which is the personnel area. So there are basically two in the students' section that would delete, that would, you know, be something that we'd have to bump up a little bit earlier so that we don't find ourselves uncovered or at risk for a potential situation as Dr. Denny described. If you prefer to wait till the very end in June, we can do that. Either way is fine. The concern that we were thinking about is, there are 329 policies that this committee is reviewing. Right now, we have 230. So it's a significant change. And for Terri, putting them individually on board docs, making the revisions, I was a little bit concerned that we would forget or, you know, make some, some changes now and then waiting until May or June to look at them again. We might have to spend a lot of time catching everybody back up to what we were thinking way back here in September. And then for Terri's sake, she would end, she has to individually put them all back on again. So it's a bit of a laborious process. But like I said, whatever you're comfortable with, we can make it work.
Deb? Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Neber?
As we've changed policies in the past, I don't think we've put them off. And they were effective when we voted on them. Whether it affected a form that was just coming out or the only one I know that was a later was transfer, but that hit at the appropriate time. So with all the policies that they're looking at, with the limited number of those that would affect anything greatly, I think our, our task would be made much easier if we went ahead and did those second readings and adopted those. And then, you know, if there's a policy that comes along that would directly or indirectly affect somebody at, at a bad time, I think that's something we could certainly take up. But I don't think we should hold up the rest of the policies for what might be seven or eight, and then go back at the end of the year because that would be... Some of us are getting older. We'd have to have several meetings to remind us, I'm teasing, of what they were about. But I, I think to make things run fluidly and seamlessly would be better to go ahead and adopt them as we review. That's just my point of view.
Okay. Mrs. Mack?
Thank you, Mrs. Zila. I'm looking back, and I, I went back to our June meeting. And we had a student expulsion at that meeting. So my thought of what Dr. Denny's saying, it could happen any time of any year. So I'm not sure there's any date that we could choose to adopt the policies where it may not affect any of those situations. So, but I, I really love listening to what the task force has discussed.
My thought was centered more around, what are we asking our students to sign in terms of-
Understood.
Policies in handbooks that they take home where their parents sign. So they know what the rules are in September. I just don't want to change the rules on them.
Right. Understood. Is this in- Mrs. Levens?
Excuse me. The, I, did you mention that the student piece will be dealt with in October? So that, I'm wondering if that's a section that we would want to wait to vote on so that we don't put students in that situation of having, and I guess, having not seen that and the board, the task force may have, there may not be any policies that do that. But that might be a section we might want to wait to vote on until the end of the school year.
Yeah, a couple of different issues. My recommendation is that we have the first reading tonight and that we approve them, adopt them at the next board meeting in October. And we go through that, through the cycle and not do, wait until the end of the school year. And several reasons for that to occur. One is if we wait until the end of the school year and we're adopting 300 some odd policies at one time, I agree, it's like, okay, what were we talking about on this policy? And so keeping it fresh in our mind is beneficial. To keep a record of those that are changing, that might impact how we operate, that could wait, I think that's a charge that we have to monitor those as we go through the process. But we also have to understand on the flip side, as we are preparing for next school year, because we are starting the budget cycle next month for the 15-16 school year. And as we're working on student handbooks and program of studies and everything for the 15-16 school year, that has to change and be adopted during the school year. So if there are policies that impact a student handbook for 14-15, but a provision we want to make sure that goes into place for 15-16, it's simply a statement in the motion that this policy goes into effect for the 15-16 school year. But we can put it in our handbooks and manuals so we have that done in advance. So I think that's a part of the issue for us. And again, I know it's the second week of school, but we're already, hate to say this, we're already preparing for the next school year. But we'll just keep track of those policies if it meets with your approval. And so we know of those that are being approved that can have an adoption or an implementation date at a later time. Also for us, honestly, in keeping track of, you know, who's on first, what we have changed, if we can do it through the process instead of the end, I think that really helps us through the process. Because understand when we're finished, then part of the responsibility of the board clerk is getting all of these policies out to buildings and on our website and all of that information. So disseminating that information really becomes a challenge for us as well. Anything you want to add to or take away, Dr. Chapman?
That's an excellent idea. I was, I was going to add that, you know, I've done a cursory review, a very thorough review of Sections A and B. A cursory review of Section I, which is instruction, which is our next one, and then J, which is students. They're not substantial changes that have been recommended. There, I mean, there, it's nothing that, that I go, ooh, boy, this is a huge change. I mean, they're little things that would certainly impact us. But overall, I don't think it's something that we couldn't absolutely live with. So I, that made me feel a little bit more comfortable about it. But I think your suggestion is really a good one about we could say, you know, this doesn't go into effect until later. But we, we do need to get moving on it because we have a lot of work to do to make sure that all of our other places were covered.
And it's a great challenge to go through a comprehensive board policy review. So the three task force members can already identify. I mean, it is a tremendous amount of work. And so a part of our challenge is not a complete overhaul of our operational policies, but we are aligning our lettering system and policies with KASB, Kansas Association of School Boards, for those that are watching. That way, when the updates come out, it's far easier for us to say, well, here is a new update based on statute or something else. Here is the policy that it aligns with. And so it streamlines that process for us as well. There are things, however, that come down by statute or by court verdict that we have to change procedures or a policy during the school year. That's something that we'll watch through this process as well, if we've had a decision in that regard. So my thought, Mrs. Zila, per what everybody wants to do, this is the first reading. If anybody has questions on any other policies, we can do that. And then we'll have the second reading at the next board meeting. We'll do that en masse. If board members have questions in the meantime, certainly. I'm hap, I'm sure the task force will be happy to entertain those questions. But then understand, we're going to have first reading of another set at the next boarding, board meeting while we're having a second reading of these policies. So we're going to be doing this every single month.
Right. Throughout the year. I believe June 22nd was the last second reading of all of those policies, per your schedule there. Is there any comments? Dr. Denny?
One more observation, and, Dr. Chapman, you help me remember this. If I look at, at Item R5, it has in parentheses at the very beginning CGAAA, GAB. Were those references inserted for our ability to see where it was? And were we going to take those out of the policy?
Yes, we would take those out. We wouldn't necessarily need them. But it's, there are places that this particular topic comes up. And this one is the nondiscrimination. And right now, we have a lot of things in our nondiscrimination policy. This really separates it and puts it in the general board governance section as well as in the students' section, in the parent's section, and the staff's section. So.
But in the final publication of policies, those, those references go away?
Correct. Because we have an easy way, as you know, through board docs that we can search. So you could type in nondiscrimination and it will pop up all the places that it appears. So we really wouldn't need that in every individual policy.
Okay. That's, just thank you for helping my memory.
Okay. Is there any other questions? This is a first reading of these policies, Mrs. Levens.
I have a couple other things. One is that, as on R21, it mentions a form or waiver. Let me find it here. It's about school board meetings.
It's executive session.
Paragraph two, "Special meetings of the board may be called at any time. Unless waived by the board, written notice of the time and place of any special meeting, et cetera, et cetera." And when I compared the various versions, there is a form that accompanies that to, to, that sets a waiver in action that I'm guessing will be at the end of the policies that we'll see at some point later?
Yes. KES, or currently, our board policies, we have, and there's, because we don't have them listed right here. But normally, we have the board policy. Then we have the board policy letters dash R, which is the procedures or the regulations. And then we have one that's dash E. And that's the exhibit. So KESB recommends that we pull out all the procedures or the dash R. We don't need those in there. We need the policy only. And those exhibits, they'll still be mentioned, but it'll be in the back of, at the very end of our board policy and board docs. And then those exhibits are also in file in the superintendent's office, so available at any time. And the clerk of the board, for this particular board policy, the clerk of the board would have that waiver or that form with her so that if you needed it, you would have it available to sign.
Great. That's helpful. Thank you.
Did you have more questions, Mrs. Levens?
Two more.
Okay.
One is, let's see, where is it? We, we, I think R31 replaces, there's a new BDA that replaces what? Let's see, are we eliminating on this? This BDA formerly discussed election of officers. And it's my understanding that was removed because that is in statute. And there's no need to include it in the policy if it's in statute. And I'm wondering if there is a handbook or something that can be prepared for our use or if there's some kind of notation so that we have that information and we're not going through statute to find it. I just, I find that is a helpful procedure. I guess it's in this R. It'd be a procedure that would be helpful to have, understand completely that needs to be pulled out, but just have... You had mentioned that some things that were pulled out are in, for example, a student handbook. They might not be in policy, but they're in handbook. And I'm not wanting to- And I'm not wanting to necessarily generate more work, but just if there could be notes made that this can be found in statute, and here's the statute.
And I believe there is a manual that, I think Teri, I have it, I have a manual with all the statutes. Some of them don't apply to school boards, but basically, anything that relates to a board's work is in this, and it's a manual prepared by KESB. And I actually have, I think either Angie has it or Teri has it. But we'll make sure that there is some such document available as well.
Okay. And one more, and that is, where are we? R31 is adopting, developing and adopting policy. We've taken out the first and second readings, understanding that we could ask for a second reading. But I am more comfortable having that first and second reading remain so that we have the chance to hear public comment, to give the items full consideration. So I would like to advocate for retaining policy BG, which recommends both the first and second reading. And it also has a statement that says, "Nothing in this policy shall preclude the board from taking immediate action to adopt or amend board policies." It's sort of like an opting out rather than an opting in. And sort of, it's there, it's there for, it's there, goes without saying. If we wanted to, we'd take that process out. For example, in a situation like this, when we have 300 and how many, did you say? So many policies, we might consider waiving that process. I don't know if there's...
Can we ask for the committee to weigh in on that? Do the task force have a particular opinion?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at item 39, so help me with this.
R31.
R39 or?
R31.
31.
Well, I'm going with 31, too.
Replacing BG, yes. Board policy BG.
But there is 39, which is the adoption amendment of policies.
Well, let me find one that I can cite, I guess, and see if this is it. 31 has something in it. If I look at 39, for example, the title of our, the title is "Approval of Revised Board Policy BG." And as I look at the policy, everything is deleted. So does that mean we have a policy BG when we adopt this with nothing in it?
The replacement is 31.
That is the replacement of number 31.
So 31 replaces...
BDA replaces BG then. And that policy would then read, "The board shall adopt or modify policies at any board meeting by majority vote of the board. All handbooks shall be approved by the board and adopted by reference as a part of these policies and rules." That would be the new recommended language without. Whereas the old one is the one that you see struck there, 39.
I don't think it precludes us from having a discussion and deciding to put off the vote.
No, anything could be taken to a second reading. There are those, like the policy that was discussed tonight, it was just a change of title. I don't know that that needs a second reading. There are a lot of policies like that that just have minute things that bring it up to our practice, actually, so.
I think it's okay.
Okay. Is that the consensus of the task force?
Yeah, I think the way it is leaves the room to do what you want and make sure when we need to. And we certainly, in our open forum, allow, if we have something that we're working on, for people to speak to it.
Right, okay. Any other questions? Mrs. Levens?
Just to be sure that I'm clear, then, so that the, it's a recommendation of the task force that we have just one reading of each policy and then vote on it at that time? Rather than read the policy, have this opportunity to discuss it, have it be revised, and come back and vote on it and collect public comment?
I don't, I don't think this policy nor the task force really say you have to vote on it at, at the time it's presented. It says, "We shall adopt or modify policies at any board meeting by majority vote." But that doesn't preclude us from having a discussion and deciding not to vote until we have more information.
Correct. If you needed, concerns about it?
Or we want changes, so we'll come back.
Correct. So that would entail a second reading then?
But I don't think, there are policies we've adopted over the years where you didn't probably need to go through two readings.
Correct.
You could have adopted it if you liked.
Exactly, like tonight's example.
So there's, I mean, I just think it provides us flexibility.
Are there any other questions on the policies that are listed on the agenda tonight? Concerns? Because next month, when we face these policies, policies again as a second reading, they will be lumped together in one vote, and all of those will be moved forward then. And we'll have another set to address then at that meeting. Madam President, Mrs. Mack?
At that meeting, though, if there was one, say that somebody had a reservation, a board member had a reservation out, we could take that out of the vote and discuss it. Would that be correct?
We could, but I'm hoping that would be tonight's discussion.
Understood.
So that, because next month, we will have another list of policies to go through.
Okay, thank you.
But that said, we could have a discussion
Certainly could.
with Dr. Chapman or something if there's a word that we'd have to...
Absolutely, absolutely, that would be noted then. Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you to the task force. I know this is an ongoing project for you all year long, so thank you for your efforts on that. Much appreciated. And with that, we will move on to the board financial report. Are there any questions or comments? Questions for Mr. Now? No? All right, then we'll move on to comments from the board. Are there any board comments this evening? Mrs. Levens?
Sorry, I'm chatty this evening. I would just like to recognize that in our HR agenda tonight, we hired a number of children of the district. And that's, maybe I'm, that's speaking, I'm now risen to the generation that these are my kids' contemporaries. But it's really exciting to see some of the students that were raised here in our community and in our district are coming back to teach in our district. And we're just thrilled to welcome them and excited to see them here.
Thank you. Any other comments? Dr. Denny?
I spent a little bit of time last Tuesday at several of our schools and just thought everything went very, very smoothly. Just a, just a joy to see all the kids back in the classroom.
A lot of excitement generated that day and all week as our kindergarteners joined us throughout the week there, so.
And I would say some of us saw a few of the kindergarteners, all of whom, I think we only saw one fairly upset, but the rest were all there and ready to go.
Was that the students?
The tears were few, but the parents maybe, you know, lots of tears there.
Well, the parents had tried to move themselves out of it.
They could go home and cry.
Try not to show their tears.
There you go. Any other comments? Very good.
Well done.
Thank you all for attending tonight. Thank you again to the task force. The meeting is adjourned.